Thank you, everyone, for being here. Sorry we were up in executive session a little bit longer than we planned, but we will go ahead and resume our meeting now. So I will reconvene into open session and I am going to turn it over to our superintendent for awards and recognitions.
All right. Good evening and welcome, everyone. I'd like to begin tonight's meeting by recognizing Heights High students who have demonstrated college-level achievement through their performances on AP exams earning Advanced Placement Scholar Awards. We have a total of sixty-nine AP Scholars. The classes of twenty-four, twenty-five, and twenty-six. This is an increase from last year and is the highest number of scholars recognized in the last eight test administrations. So I'm going to announce the names of those who earned this distinction. If you are here by your different category, please come up to the front. Now, the first person is just going to be you, but I promise you, you're going to be joined by many others. And then we will take a picture for each of those categories and then we'll do a big one with everyone, okay? So we'll probably ask you just to hang out on this side as we continue with the recognitions. Okay. So, again, when you hear your name, come up front and center, group photo, and then we will continue. All right. So the AP Scholar Award is granted to students who receive scores of three or higher on three or more AP exams. Heights High has thirty-five students in this category. So, I mean, three or higher on three or more, that's a lot. Okay, so AP Scholars. Lukasha Abdul-Hafiz, Nia Baker, Avery Bandy Zalatoris, Kennedy Binder, Kiara Britt, Olivia Brunick, Peter Calkins, Alu Sissay, I apologize if I'm saying it wrong, Helena Duffy, Juliette Duffy, Mateo Ebbett, Sam Hagsfeld, Ian Hunter, Ryland Mann, May McPherson, Lucas Miller, Noah Miller, Matthias Mountsey, Benjamin Nat Kavissius, Emily Nicole, Sophia Pahovic, Casey Ruffs, Mia Ryan Myers, Arthur Schmedel, Mabry Sears, Samira Sisyon, Bernard Stevens, Tavish Sweeney, Sophia Tascon, Nathaniel Tisch, Quentin Bear Sharon, Alexander Villanueva, Kane Wall, Karis Wilson, and Camira Wise. So those are our AP Scholars. None of them are here tonight, but let's celebrate them in abstention.
I'd like to point out that some of them are at college already.
Oh, yes. Eleven students were recognized as AP Scholars with Honor. This award is granted to students who received an average of at least three-point-two-five on all AP exams taken and scores of three or higher on four or more of these exams. So our AP Scholars with Honor are Remy Burbow, Antonia Kasucci, Michaela Davis, Andrew Engelman, Milo Goldmark. All right. You guys just stand and face the front. Bennett Jeffers, Anthony Jalavet, Gabriel Malamad. All right. Trudy Matsumai, Mitchell Reinhardt, and Ella Whiterson. All right. Twenty-three students were named AP Scholars with Distinction. This award is granted to students who received an average score of at least three-point-five on all AP exams taken and scores of three or higher on five or more of these exams. Represent-- oh, okay, so those students are Ian Bandy Zalatoris, Demi Banks, Natalie Beer, Laura Boucher, Margot Burke, Sean Egbert, Alex Fisher, Alana Gainer, Caleb Green, Marcus Holland, William Larkin, Clara Lyford, Erin Malamed, Gabriel Manila, Jack Morehouse, Jay Mueller, Sophia Mueller, Polly Ralph, Sarah Schubert, Charles Stadlin, Stella Stowovy, Sheridan Sweeney, and Goose Spock. And that last name was Gus Spock. Okey-dokey. Trying to keep it all together. And finally, one student received the AP International Diploma Award. This is a globally-recognized certificate awarded to students with exceptional achievement across various disciplines. This certificate is available for international students applying to colleges outside of the country. This award is granted to students with an average score of three or higher on five or more of these exams. And this year's recipient recipient is Marcus Holland, class of 2024. So do you want to do everyone? Okay, so any AP Scholar, Distinction, Diploma, hold on, what's the other category? Scholars, Honors, everyone, come on up. We'll do one big picture. All right.
So real quick, Liz, let me just share one thing. I had a chance to speak on Thursday to the members of the newly-installed Distinguished Alumni Hall of Fame. And I bragged about that number of sixty-nine, and they were blown away. And these are the best of the best of the best of the best of Heights High grads, and they were blown away by you all. So bravo. Bravo to you all.
And I'd like to point out that in addition to some of the folks not being here because they are already off at college, I know there's a senior night going on tonight, and some of the kids might be at that, and that is why Ms. Crenshaw is not with us this evening. She's there representing her daughter at senior night.
So we have gifts.
They're right outside on this small table by the front desk, and there's also refreshments.
And please eat the cookies, the freshmen, the cheese, the crackers, all of that. That is for you guys. So please, feel free to stay for the board meeting, but if you do, if you do leave, please grab some snacks, some fruit. That's all for you guys.
And you've all got homework, so get out of here.
So next to recognize our finance team for a significant, long-running accomplishment, I'll now turn it over to our board president, Jody Serini, to present this award.
Congratulations, Scott. Again, the district--
Yet again.
Yes, yet again. The district's finance department has once again been awarded the Certificate of Achievement for Excellence in Financial Reporting. The department received this award for its annual comprehensive financial report for the fiscal year ended June thirtieth, 2023. The award is given by the Government Finance Officers Association of the United States and Canada, and it's the highest form of recognition in the area of governmental accounting and financial reporting. This is the twenty-first year in a row that Chief Financial Officer Scott Gainer and his team have earned this award. You can view that financial report on chuh.org, and I want to personally congratulate Scott Gainer and his team and thank them for all of the efforts that they put forth for our district. So I have this certificate. I will give it to Scott, and we will take a photo. You're welcome.
You got to get a photo, too.
Well, there we go. We'll take one, absolutely.
You go get it there. You're his boss.
No, we're his boss. I don't know, whatever.
Now, now. Sorry?
That's the way that works, right?
Dan, are you in?
Finally, we recognize our Tiger Team Members of the Month for September. These Cleveland Heights University High staff members have been recognized by their peers and community members for going above and beyond to contribute to the culture of excellence in our district. Your colleagues who nominated you for this recognition have shared these heartfelt words about you. So as I say your name, please come up to the front. From the Board of Education, Sharon Roller. Sharon's exceptional attention to detail and her ability to consider all factors in the situation make her an invaluable asset to the data department and CHUH school community. Sharon consistently goes above and beyond to ensure that every project is executed flawlessly. From Boulevard Elementary School, Genevieve Caneely. Genevieve is new to Boulevard in our district. Genevieve is genuinely warm and caring, which allows her to reach the hearts and minds of all students. Her academics are creative and strong, encompassing various strategies that keep our students on their toes learning. So happy Genevieve is a part of our Boulevard family. From Canterbury Elementary School, Mariah Lightfoot. While Mariah is new to Canterbury, she has already made such an impact. She is willing to help with students who are struggling and get to know them on a deeper level, creating rapport and trust. From Delisle Option Center, Ed Stare. Ed was instrumental in helping to get the Heights Family Resource Center at Delisle opened. He responded to requests, ensured that the facility was clean and in good repair, and always greeted us with, "Let me know if there's anything else you need." From Fairfax Elementary School, Tracy Adine. Tracy is so helpful, always willing to support and assist when needed. Anytime I need help with anything, she is there to give advice, knowledge, or her experience on it. A fabulous teacher, her care and concern for her students is unmatched. From Garrity, Brian Stern. Mr. Stern always plans developmentally appropriate and engaging art activities for his students. He supports school activities like marching in the homecoming parade or fifth-grade send-off with creative designs. Mr. Stern will tutor students on his pre-K day and is willing to lead art enrichment activities. He's been a member of the BLT for over three years and gives valuable input on our building processes. From Heights High School, Kim Suddith. She is an all-around kind, dedicated educator and assistant. I see her inspire students and staff alike, and she is always willing to step in and help. Very true. Monticello Middle School, Shirley Fuller. Shirley always has a positive attitude when she is at work. She is friendly and very attentive to the details of her role. She is a very upbeat and joyful employee employee who not only does her job well, but brings happiness to others. She is an asset to the district. Noble Elementary School, Carol Parison Wilson. She always has a positive attitude when she is at work. She is friendly and very attentive to the details of her role. She is a very upbeat and joyful employee who not only does her job well, but brings happiness to others. She is an asset to the district. Oxford Elementary, Caitlin Klastra. I am a first-year, I am a first-year teacher new to CHUH, and Caitlin has gone out of her way to help me navigate all parts of a new school year. Though we do not teach the same grade, she has shared resources, insight on students, and her time to make certain I have a successful year. From Roxboro Elementary School, Karen Wilmich. Karen is a great team member who is fun to work with. She goes above and beyond to help the teachers of the students she supports. And finally, from Roxboro Middle School, Kristen Leonard. Ms. Leonard should be recognized because of her tenacity and resilience that she brings to the work environment. She has taken on a dual role this year in co-teaching and simultaneously working in the classroom for students with emotional disabilities. This school year began with a smooth transition due to Ms. Leonard providing a welcoming, safe, learning environment. Congratulations to the winners. We're going to ask you to step to the middle and take a picture. And now I'm going to turn it over to Emmanuel Gutierrez for the Student Cadre Report, and Sheridan Sweeney for the Student Cadre Report.
Good morning, Board of Education members, Superintendent Kirby, and Mr. Gainer. My name is Emmanuel, and I'm a freshman at Heights High.
My name is Sheridan Sweeney. It's on. My name is Sheridan Sweeney, and I'm a senior here at Heights, or at Heights High. As member of the Superintendent's Cadre, we are here to give a brief report about what's happening at Heights High. We are honored to be here this evening. Thank you for the opportunity.
First, we would like to tell you about our athletic teams and provide an update about several upcoming events at Heights High. Cross-country, it's been a first, it's been a great first half of the cross-country season. Cross-country, it's been a first, it's been a great first half of the cross-country season. The boys' team is led by Alex Burke. The girls' team is extremely young but very talented. Seven of the 13 girls on the team are freshmen, and the group is led by dual-threats Jada Davis and Cassidy Thompson. This year Heights, or the year Heights hosted the McDonald Invitational again, and saw a record-high 40-plus schools participate. Alex Burke took first place in the boys' varsity race. Jada Davis took first place in the girls' varsity race, and Cassidy Thompson finished third. Football. Football opened up the season with an impressive win against traditional division two powerhouse Trotwood-Madison. Injuries have slowed the team down the past few weeks, but they look to be back on track with players healing up. They hope to make a strong push into the playoffs. Boys' and girls' golf. This fall was a record-high for participation in boys' and girls' golf. The boys' team had 10 members, and the girls' team had 11. Both teams played competitively in matches and experienced growth as players. New coach and parent, Robert Mann, has been a huge asset to the golf program with his resources at Proximity Golf. Boys' soccer, it's been a rebuilding year for boys' soccer, as the program replaced a longtime coach and several big-time senior contributors. Coach Joel Mashdon Tony, Tony, sorry, and the group have played tough and spirited all season long. Currently, they sit 2-2 in the GCC. The future is bright for the program, and as many freshmen and sophomores are playing significant varsity minutes. Girls' soccer, there are many parallels between the boys' and girls' soccer programs. The girls also replaced their head coach this year and are counting on many underclassmen in key positions. The girls' team also sits at 2-2 in the GCC and 7-6 overall. The month of September saw the girls go on a four-game winning streak. The future is also very bright for this group. Girls' tennis, another program that saw record-high participation this fall, with 26 girls playing tennis. This large group was led by seniors Brooklyn Peacock and Sheridan Sweeney, representing the Tigers as 1 and 2 in singles. Although there were a lot of positives this, positives this year, this are, this year, our wonderful tennis coach, Nicole Zewick, is moving on, as she has taken a new role in the school district. We appreciate all our efforts leading our tennis programs and wish her well in her new role. Girls' volleyball, this program continues to battle against some of the better teams in the state. They are tough and resilient. They have made huge strides competitively and have been a ton of fun to watch. Their competitive spirit and genuine compassion for each other exemplifies what Heights Athletics is all about. Volleyball is currently undefeated in their non-conference schedule and look to build on the momentum for the back half of the season.
Here are a few other important events that are happening at Heights High. On September 6th, Heights High held its first school-wide PBIS event with a cohort dodgeball game. Students and staff members teamed up to face off against peers from the other cohorts, and after several rounds of friendly competition, unfortunately, the juniors, the cohort of 2026, came out victorious. Students were able to participate and attend based on their daily school attendance, positive behavior, and successful course performance. During the week of September 16th, students and staff participated in various activities for Start With Hello Week, the National Call to Action Week dedicated to making new social connections and creating a sense of belonging among the youth. Students who are or will be 18 by the November 5th election had the opportunity to complete their voter registration last week. On the 23rd, a hip-hop voter registration bus event took place in partnership with the Ohio Alliance for Community Engagement, and brought music, food, civic engagement information, and registration support for young voters in a fun and engaging way. Students also had the opportunity to register in, on the 25th, with the League of Women Voters during their lunch periods. On September 22nd, junior Henry Dick placed 6th at the 2024 Shining Star Cleveland Contest. The American Idol-style competition is organized by the Mandel Jewish Community Center and awards nearly $20,000 in scholarships to students grades 9 through 12 in throughout, in and throughout greater Cleveland. Last week, the 2027 and 2028 cohorts participated in various activities for National Gear Up Week, one of the largest and most effective programs focusing on increasing the college and career readiness of low-income students in communities nationwide. Activities included spirit theme days, a goal wall for the school year, karaoke, and Q&amp;A sessions with several of the newly-distinguished alumni to the Heights School's Foundation Hall of Fame.
Next, we would like to talk about our theme this year, Heights United, and what that means to us. To me, unity is foundation, is the foundation of having a successful school, and it makes a good school a great school, essentially bringing it to the next level. So far, I've witnessed many educators and admins alike demonstrate unity. Whether this is assisting a student in finding a class, or explaining a subject one more time to a student who doesn't understand, it has been greatly shown, and it is obvious that everyone is doing great and trying their best to provide a safe and positive environment for everyone.
Heights United sums up what it means to be a Heights Tiger. Recently, I was part of an image makers club at Heights, and we were the ones who introduced this year's 2024 Hall of Fame cohort. In talking to these successful past alumni about their experiences at Heights, and reflecting on my now-almost-four years at this wonderful school, I can honestly say that Heights is definitely one of the best schools in the, in the world, and it is because we are a united, united community. Thank you so much for your time.
Thank you, Sheridan.
Thank you.
And that concludes the opening.
Thank you. We really appreciate the student reports.
Yeah, we love it.
It's one of the favorite things on the agenda.
It might be my favorite part of board meetings.
Yeah, that, and when we were doing the school spotlights, that was my second favorite thing on this. So, we should do that.
Tiger Member of the Month.
Yeah, yeah, there's a lot of good things. Okay.
We got a lot to celebrate around here.
All right, so the next item on our agenda is statements from the audience. The board asks that you please refrain from mentioning specific students or employees by name in your comments. If your comments involve a student or an employee, the board asks that you please not address the individual by name. We ask that you remain cognizant that we are an open meeting and possibly in the presence of students. Also, please limit your comments to three minutes. After three minutes, the microphone will be muted. Thank you. So, I believe the first couple of people who signed up were here for words and recognitions, and so we have Angel Fasolo, and she will be speaking on allegations of district failures and Title IX violations found in the two multi-victim federal lawsuits against CHUH and admins.
Since the district seems to be creating a false and dismissive narrative on the two multi-plaintiff federal lawsuits currently against them, I'll share some of the publicly-available court filings claiming the district allegedly failed and violated the rights of student victims who reported sexual harassment or rape committed by other students throughout the Tiger Nation. The 10 specific counts against the district and/or employees include failure to comply with Title IX, Title IX retaliation, deliberate indifference to sexual harassment, denial of due process, denial of equal protection, liability for failure to comply with Title IX, negligence, willful and wanton, acting with malicious purpose, bad faith, or wanton in reckless manner, negligent hiring, retention, supervision, intentional infliction of emotional distress. Allegations include, quote, "Failure to take immediate and appropriate steps to investigate sex-based harassment and assaults, and failure to take prompt and effective steps to end the harassment and assaults once put on notice. The sexual harassment and misconduct had become sufficiently severe as to deny plaintiffs' access to defendant CHUH's educational program and activities in violation of Title IX and state law. Failure to comply with Title IX amounts to an official policy of inaction. At times, victims of assault were reprimanded, disciplined, suspended, blamed, or faced unlawful retaliation, isolated, or shamed. Failure to report assaults to any public children's service agency or a peace officer in violation of the Ohio Revised Code. Failure to adequately train or supervise staff. Failure to enforce a restraining order, yet punishing a victim regarding a different, quote, "frivolous protection order sought by a perpetrator. Failure to investigate or insufficient investigations. Unreasonably delayed investigations, at times months or over a year delayed. Failure to interview witnesses, omitting relevant info such as police reports or evidence. Repeatedly protecting alleged aggressors rather than victims. Many victims were forced to interact with alleged perpetrators, denying appropriate accommodations or safety plans or not following them. Failure to inform victims of rights. One employee, who Board Member Hines wrote publicly should be fired in an unrelated matter, conducted an investigation with, quote, "numerous procedural defects, including but not limited to not letting the victim review evidence, summary of reports, but also imposing a fake rule about time limits for the victim to give responses using a stopwatch, and warned that she could be cut off. Quote, 'No such time limits or restrictions exist under Title IX.'" Regarding district response to the press given by the defendant-superintendent, the amended and expanded filings claim, quote, "disingenuous," as the district's response highlights the commitment to a public relations campaign rather than to protecting students. It also says the district behaved with, quote, "with the dishonest purpose of avoiding state and federal reporting requirements, which would have tarnished defendant's image in the eyes of prospective students and their parents."
Thank you, Ms. Fasolo, for your comments. We respect the right of our community members to express their thoughts, opinions, and points of view during our public comment period. That time belongs to you. But we do find it necessary to address the repeated statements by some about the district's response to the very sensitive and important matter of the Title IX investigations, particularly regarding the named defendants in the lawsuits. As we have said, we are committed to responding promptly, thoroughly, and equitably to allegations of violent or inappropriate behavior. Equitable treatment also dictates that individuals are not assumed to have engaged in wrongdoing based solely on a case being filed, and this includes not being placed on leave or subject to disciplinary action unless other facts warrant that response. We consistently review information brought to our attention and make appropriate determinations based on that information. These legal matters must be allowed to play out through the appropriate legal channels. So, the next item on our agenda is the consent agenda. Do I have a motion to consider the consent agenda?
I motion we consider the consent agenda.
Do I have a second?
A second.
Do I have any comments on the consent agenda?
Doing cool stuff.
It's good to see the field trips.
Yeah, to Mercyhurst and to Allegheny College. I know Allegheny College, a number of Heights students have found great success at Allegheny.
Couple of our staff went there, too.
That's right. Yes. Mr. Bifuko.
Yes.
Is a legend on the campus of Allegheny. And wanted to recognize, as we always try to recognize, some very generous donations that have come in this month. These generous, these generous donations make a lot of the programming possible. These are all the little extras that our principals and teachers are able to bring out, so this is really great.
I have some questions concerning the quarterly contracts, and I don't know if that's for Mr. Gaynor or for Mr. Petcak.
Probably Mr. Petcak, but I don't think he's-
I don't think he's here.
But we can try to answer, or we can get answers for it.
Okay. I have four questions. Number one, the John Carroll contract for work-study. I was assuming that this is for student teachers, but Attachment A wasn't there, described the work-study work, if that makes sense.
Yeah, Dr. Lombardi.
The early childhood pilot from the state of Ohio, it looks like it's an application for a grant, but have we been awarded the money, I guess is my question?
We have, and you'll see that in three things later.
Oh, okay. All right, good. Excellent. Thank you. The WAGL contract, specified numbers of students being involved, but I don't know which school they're in, and I, I don't know if it matters, but I guess my question is whether all three grades are in the same elementary building, or if they are in multiple elementary buildings.
Mike or Amanda can address that.
Can you come to the, yeah, yeah, please come to the microphone, otherwise the people on, watching this later won't be able to hear it. Thank you.
Yes, so for our ELA-WAGL pilot, it's 3rd, 4th, and 5th grade, and they are in different buildings. So, 3rd grade in one building, 4th grade in another, and then 5th grade in a 3rd building, and those are, so that we can kind of get teacher feedback, student feedback, and then compare student performance, so that we have some classrooms that are using it and some classrooms that aren't, so we can determine if it has an impact on student achievement. All of our classrooms right now have access, K to 8s, to WAGL math, and middle school, which was purchased last year, has access to WAGL ELA. So, this pilot is just to pilot it for 3, 4, or 5.
Got it. Thank you. And my last question concerns the Logicalis contract, because I couldn't find a price anywhere in it, and I was wondering how much we're paying for all the IT stuff that's encompassed in that.
Mr. Brown's here.
Yeah, see? Mr. Brown's name is all over that.
Yes. Should put a microphone in the back of the room. Good evening. I believe the one that's on there is actually for block of hours for ongoing support throughout the school year. If we need technical support of a couple hours for an engineer to look at something, I think that's the one that George has on there. I didn't look at the agenda specifically.
Hang on, let me see if I can find it quickly, because there are a lot of contracts this month.
Hold on.
It lists a lot of equipment.
Yeah, this is, this is exactly what it is. It's for block of hours work on an ongoing basis throughout the school year. I think, I think it's $3,500 or $4,000, and then we'll add more if we need it.
If we use up the, the number of hours, then we pay extra later.
That's correct.
Okay, thank you. I appreciate it. Okay, that's it for me, nitpicking.
If I could just point out one thing real quick. When we talk about piloting things at different schools, one of the nice benefits of that is that if you do decide to adopt in the future years, you've got one person at three different schools that the other teachers can then turn to who have had a year of experience. So, thank you for that. That's, that's a really good thing to do.
On the finance section, resolution approving payment of POs. That's encompassing, that's right?
Yeah.
Scott, can you tell us a little bit about the 14 grand to the Connect vendor for internet access to Jay-Zoo? Is that in fulfilling? So, that would be, and Mark can correct me if I'm wrong, but that's, that's through their non-public fund, so they're, they're, we're the, we're the pass-through entity that they're contracting directly with Neonet for that. Okay, perfect.
No other comments? Then, Mr. Gaynor, will you call the roll?
Mr. Hines.
Yes.
Ms. Lewis.
Yes.
Ms. Serini.
Yes.
Mr. Trimble. Yes.
Now, I will turn it over to our superintendent for the superintendent's report.
And good evening again. We are going to move the gear-up proclamation to the next month. We do have, we had National Gear Up Week last week and have a signed proclamation, I believe, from elected officials, but I want to wait until we have that actually to present and go over. So, we'll, we'll return with that. And now, I want to turn it over to our summer school planning team to go over the report on summer school.
Good evening, Board, Superintendent, Mr. Gaynor. We appreciate this evening, evening's opportunity to share with you what occurred over the summer with our programming. I'm very excited we brought the team back together, and they're gonna all present to you things that are related to their specific work during the summer program. So, our summer programming, as mentioned before, actually spanned the whole, like kindergarten through 12th grade. So, in some ways, we impacted all of those grade levels. So, it was just a great opportunity to find different ways in which we could span all students that we serve in the district. And with us tonight, except for one person who unfortunately couldn't attend tonight, we do have Lisa Hussein, who was our Tiger Camp Coordinator, and we have Dylan David, who was our middle school camp coordinator. Katie Bitner unfortunately was not able to attend tonight, and we had Cheryl, we have Cheryl Walton, who was our 2nd through 12th grade coordinator and supported all of the coordinators in the program. and supported all of the coordinators in the program. So as I mentioned, this program spanned all grade levels, kindergarten through 12th grade, and we'll get into K1 a little bit later. But in terms of Tiger Camp, middle school camp, and high school camp, all of them occurred from June 10th to July 12th in the morning, and we had different focus during these camps, as we'll get into a little bit more. We also had some summer gear-up opportunities. We had, over the three weeks, we had camps serving different cohorts with different experiences in STEM learning, entrepreneurship, college visits. These were things that we just wanted to take advantage of this time to really build up our gear-up opportunities and connections we can make for students beyond high school. So I'm going to turn it over to Lisa, who will talk a little bit about Tiger Camp.
Good evening. I had the pleasure and great satisfaction of being the elementary coordinator for Tiger Camp for second and third grade this past summer. It was by invitation only from data and test scores from building principals. We had 151 students enrolled between the second and third grade class. The classrooms were ratioed at 1 to 15. We also had a para in each classroom to provide support to the teachers. We also included two intervention specialists, one for grade two and one for grade three, that worked with small groups and focused on the IEP needs of those students. In total, we had about 36 staff members participating, and they were wonderful. The Tiger Camp attendance, so from our 151 students who were enrolled for the 22 days, at least 100 students participated for more than half of the days. So between that 11 and 16 and 17-plus days, we had about 105 students who came for half the time. Some Tiger Camp successes and opportunities for growth. The successes were the successful implementation of the instructional resources. Teachers complemented the 95% group for phonics, the wonders for ELA, and the kids loved the XERN math online learning. The Cleveland Kids Book Bank, I was able to secure about seven or eight boxes of free books for second grade all the way up to 12th grade. So any student coming into High-Tai had an opportunity to select at least two books to take home with them to encourage the sermon-reading requirement. So we were able to send kids home with books and backpacks and other Tiger Nation swag. There were minimal behavior concerns over the 22 days that we were in Tiger Camp, and I was able to send out a feedback form to the staff members to just get their feedback on areas of success and areas that we can improve upon. So that is linked in the slideshow. Also, just in personal communications during arrival and dismissal, lots of parents were pleased with the Tiger Camp program and are looking forward to hopefully seeing it again next summer. Some opportunities to areas of growth would be to figure out a way to encourage and increase attendance of the second and third grade families. Because it was during the summer, lots of families were taking vacations and time away. So to get them to come consistently for the 22 days was a challenge. And to increase community partnerships with local community organizations would be a benefit, too. So here are just a few pictures of our Tiger Camp classrooms and our groups. We had community and schools coming in to provide some activities and treats to encourage attendance and engagement in the classroom. So they would come in and visit the classrooms and do brain breaks with the kids daily. And on Fridays, they would give out special treats. They had themes for each week. Some more classroom pictures, and a few more. And this was the Cleveland Kids Book Bank we had set up for the kids to grab t-shirts, two books, backpacks, water bottles. And now we get to the data. So we had pre- and post-assessments for both second and third grade for math, ELA, and phonics. This spreadsheet or this slide shows that both second and third grade showed growth between their pre- and post-tests over the 22 days. Another slide shows the ELA growth, and to note that for third grade, there was less growth there, and I'm thinking that is impacted by their attendance. Third grade was a little more lax on their attendance than second grade. So it shows.
The difference in the columns that say number of students, that has to do with who was there that day?
Who was there to take the test. Exactly.
Got it.
And the final slide is the phonics pre- and post-data. Also showed growth during the 22 days there.
Lisa, that's significant growth for only 22 days.
Yes, it is. Yeah.
Congratulations on that, and congratulations to our students.
And the staff. They did the work. And here is the slide for the OST ELA participation. So during the third week of Tiger Camp, select students were tested during that summer testing window for OST. We had 18 Tiger Camp students participating in that ELA test, and we also had two non-Tiger Camp students who came in to take the test. So a total of 20 students took the test. At the time this slide was created, I did not have the results back. So I will let Amanda and Mike discuss the results, the data. And that is it for me.
One thing I'll say real quick while you guys are transitioning, with the attendance, I know it feels like, oh, we've got to get our attendance up, and we've got kids coming and going. Summer is so tough for families. I don't, not so long ago, I was scheduling my kid week-to-week on summer camps and all of that, and an opportunity comes up or a family member comes into town, and, you know, it's the one time outside of the school year where you can pull your kid out of an activity, pull them out of camp for a day or two days, whatever the case is. So definitely don't beat yourselves up too much about that. I mean, like Jody said, this is, you know, a huge win. You have the proof in the pudding right here.
I'm just going to speak real quick. I know Lisa mentioned, and I can go back real quick here. So we were really happy to see the participation in that summer administration of the OST. We did not see any students reach proficiency as a result of that administration, but I do want to focus on the growth that we achieved in that program. And what I believe is that we can continue to build on that growth with those particular students, you know, as we enter the next grade level. So that was critical, and that was a critical area of focus when we think about, you know, the growth that we made in that summer program. While we would love to see students reach that level of proficiency, as, you know, the third graders that we invited were students that had not yet reached proficiency. So we, of course, want to give them that opportunity. And if they're not making that level of proficiency in that administration, we'll continue to grow them into the next grade level. So I just wanted to make mention of that. And that is correct. The time we created this presentation, we did not have that information at that point in time, so that's why it wasn't there. I'll turn it over to Dylan from middle school.
Good evening. So I was the lucky one. I got to be the coordinator for the middle school program. Of the students that we targeted, we had about 45% actually register for summer school. As Mr. Trimble had alluded to, we had pretty good attendance. It was spotty at times. Some students had went on vacations and had other events to that matter. A couple of our students actually participated in a couple of the other programs as well, and were having trouble going to both. The student-to-teacher ratios were really, really good. Fortunately, we built a relationship with Teach for America, and we had a Teach for America personnel in every classroom for four or five of the five- or six-week program. And then we had Cleveland State come in at the second half because of Dr. Townes' connection in his class. So we had a lot of support in the middle school classroom. So this is a really huge thing that I'm really proud of from the program. We had significant growth across all three grade levels in mathematics. As we know right now in education, mathematics is a huge focus. We have a lot of students that are struggling on overcoming many barriers that they face in the instruction. It's not easy, so I was happy to see this type of growth come out of the program. We had the opportunity kind of use Bridge to Algebra and XERN, which was really good because it was a multi-sensory approach, where students got the opportunity to connect with learning, do some project-based learning, work in small group, have some teacher-directed time. It was just a really good combination. So I really think that the online component helped as well. Students using their Chromebooks that had that opportunity. I think another big success was our culture and climate. We had no major behavioral incidents, and that was one thing that, you know, I really wanted to come out of the program. I wanted our students to have a safe learning environment where they knew that they could come and just have someone to talk to. The opportunity to have a counselor and a female administrative assistant was huge for us, because we were able to pull kids in if they were having a social-emotional thing going on and talk to them. We had a couple of students that had some issues in the classroom that we were able to pull out and kind of have a conversation, and they actually were going to have some of those teachers the following year, and we were able to kind of mend those relationships. So that was really good. I think an area to focus on would be the recruiting, getting kids more information earlier on so they actually know what the program is about. If we could take that 45% to about 75%, our numbers would be astronomically different, so. Dr. Jenkins?
I'm going to talk a little bit about high school. Before I do that, I can't understate how fabulous these guys were in terms of building that climate and culture during the summer. I know it's difficult. These are times when, you know, kids are, it's summer. You know, it's not a time typically, you know, they would be accustomed to going to school, or even just their headspace in terms of school in general. They've done, they did such a nice job, really establishing expectations and being really clear and supporting the teachers. And we really enjoyed just our visits. Amanda and I would go in and just support the staff, and we just really enjoyed the vibe we got overall from all the summer programming. So I just have to say that that was just something I really wanted to stress. So a little bit about the high school. Just real quick with high school, as you know, maybe you don't, much of the high school programming is really geared through edgenuity and really trying to get students those credits that they need to really get through the finish line. We are also really proud to, as we looked at the data, that a majority of students that took advantage of the summer program earned a C or higher, as you can see here in the grade distribution. Just a few things that we'll point out. In terms of summer school seniors, so this is like that home stretch, let's get through the finish line. We had 15 seniors sign up. We did have a couple that didn't attend, and we had five that started and didn't finish. So we plan, of course, you know, having them be part of the options program this year to really get them through so they can get their diploma. Also, we are also proud to say that we had eight summer graduating seniors. We had our graduation right in August, and I know many of you attended, and it was great. I mean, remember, like, those families were so proud. I mean, that was just fabulous. We had like, I don't know, like 50, 60 people in the audience for eight kids. It was amazing. And it was just a really proud moment for the whole team and Katie to really get these kids through, and it was just a really nice moment. So I wanted to just do a shout-out for them. So just to go over some successes and opportunities we have with the high school program. Again, we had five additional students from the class graduate because of the program. We had 147 credits earned in that program alone, which is amazing. We had 90 students actually complete the summer school, which is a great piece, and to even talk about like summer and just really that headspace for being in school, you know, we had a lot of students participate. We want to continue to expand our offerings and even possibly beyond edgenuity. I know that Superintendent Kirby and I talk often about different programming, different things we can do for kids as they, even like when we think about eighth graders transitioning into ninth grade. So just other opportunities we can build into the programming. We want to also just continue to ensure that edgenuity is set up effectively. We don't want to create our own barriers internally with setting things up, and just so that is something that we want to continue to make sure that all of our systems are in place and making sure that, you know, we're able to implement the tools effectively. So completion rate and attendance was a little lower this year. Some of the students withdrew in the first week. And one thing I will point out as a growth opportunity is something to think about. Summer programming, up until last year, we had a lot of ESSR funding that helped us with that programming. With that no longer available last summer, this past summer, we did ask families to pay for those courses, and we certainly don't want that to be a barrier. So just thinking creatively how we can work through that and make that so that, you know, it's free and available for people that want to take advantage of that. So there's just an opportunity there to possibly grow.
What was the amount?
So it was $100 for the course. $200 that they took two courses, but we capped it at that. So if there were, a lot of students took two courses, one or two. Many did not go beyond the two. I'd have to double-check to see if there were any that took beyond the two. Without Katie here, I can get back to you on that. But generally speaking, it was one or, I would say probably two classes, but I don't have those numbers. I can get those to you if you wanted them.
It's helpful.
Yep. Okay, we're going to talk about Camp Invention.
Good evening. Aside from the summer school programming, we also had other programming that took place later on in the summer. We had Camp Invention that was held at the high school from July 22nd through the 26th. It was like a full-day program. There were 41 students who participated with two staff members and two instructors through Camp Invention, and there were also two Cleveland Heights, University of Heights interns from Monticello Middle School. During Camp Invention, the kids were immersed in a lot of STEM activities. It was an opportunity for students to become immersed with collaboration, problem-solving, inquiry, and they did activities, different activities each day. There is a link to each one, but some of the examples are building a glow box, using different light forms, building a light-up game board, building to help solve the world's water challenges, and transforming ideas into amazing inventions. Here are some examples of the student creations during that time. A lot of it was hands-on, so it got the students an opportunity to get away from screens and paper pencils and doing things that are fun while they're learning at the same time. And here are a few of the family testimonials that they really appreciated, the opportunity for students to have a week during the summer where they can really have engaging, hands-on activities that also provided inquiry and problem-solving for students and able to work together as a team. So those are some of the quotes that came from the parents and how appreciative they were of the program. And so some, those are some of the quotes that came from the parents and how appreciative they were of the program.
So another part of our summer programming was K and One Jump Start. So whereas second grade through high school was more of district programming, the K and One Jump Start was more building-based programming. So this focused on first, rising first and second grade students. The last two weeks of summer, right before school started, they were able to come in for some small group instruction with teachers. So buildings were able to select which students participated based on their data from the previous year. And the intention was to keep those groups very small so that teachers could really differentiate and focus on the early literacy skills that students needed to build. We know that summer slide is a real thing. And so this gave students an opportunity to kind of get a jump start on reviewing those skills before school started and for their teachers to learn more about where they're coming in at. So altogether, we had fifty-four students participate in Jump Start, and that allowed us to keep that teacher-student ratio very small. So students were getting their individual support they need.
Were those held in each of the elementaries or?
They were held in each of the elementaries. I believe there was an issue with like HVAC at Boulevard, and so their programming was held at Fairfax. But every other building was held in their home building. So that's great, especially for the younger students. They're familiar with like the classrooms, the spaces. Sometimes there's anxiety about coming back to school, and so that helps ease some of that, too.
Also getting re-acclimated before the school gets bustling.
Busy. And then at Oxford, they held a fifth-grade leadership program, and it was based on the Seven Habits of Happy Kids by Sean Covey. So that's from Leader and Me. And so they had different activities, workshops, interactive challenges that focused on leadership skills through the lens of seven powerful habits. And so those habits that they focused on were being proactive. So knowing that you're in control of yourself and you can kind of plan ahead to prevent issues from occurring, beginning with the end in mind, so the idea of working towards a goal and having a plan, putting first things first. So for our fifth graders, the idea of first we work, then we play, and thinking about prioritizing. Think win-win. So sometimes when we're presented with like a conflict or a challenge, kind of finding the balance between what you want to get out of a situation and understanding other people's perspective and how you can work to find a solution where everybody wins. Seeking first to understand, then to be understood. Synergize, which really focuses on teamwork and the idea that we are humble and that we come up with better solutions when we work together than if we work alone. And then sharpen the saw, which focuses on really kind of taking care of yourself, getting enough sleep, eating good food, exercising, spending time with your family, taking care of your mental health. So altogether, they had eighteen students participate from their upcoming fifth-grade group and four staff members. And that was really impactful for those fifth-grade students. I will say, I had the opportunity, one of our days, to teach for a half-day for fourth grade at Oxford and got to see some of the fifth graders, and that leadership was apparent. So that was great to see. We just want to open it up to any questions?
We should also really thank our kitchen staff for preparing meals all summer long. A high number of our students participated in the breakfast and lunch programs, and our custodial staff did an amazing job as well, keeping the building clean.
Thank you.
So we'd like to open up if anybody has any questions or comments.
I just want to thank you guys for running a great program. I also know the two of our presenters have been promoted to administrative positions in other entities. And I am not surprised, given how well you have served the district. And just, you know, if it's, the summer work is an indication of your leadership, you know, certainly they are very lucky. So we're glad that you have some opportunities to practice that leadership and launch and also support our students. So thank you for all of you, and thank you guys for coming. Who aren't even in the district, for coming back to present.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Thank you all.
Do you have any grants or other sources of funding in mind to help offset the cost of edgenuity? Because that's a hundred dollars.
Yeah.
Is a pretty big number.
I, I, I have, I have that in mind. I don't have specific sources for that yet. I have some ideas.
Well, you have it till next June.
But yes, I think, I think to, 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 to make this an opportunity and not have a barrier like that, I think is important. So yes.
Mike, might I recommend that you talk to Laura Lobel of the Heights Schools Foundation? Because I think that there are a number of grads who would really love to lean in on that targeted.
It's a great idea.
Expenditure.
Yeah, thanks for mentioning that. That's a great idea. Yeah.
Yeah, it'd be really great if we could figure a way to take that barrier. I mean, it's what it is.
Yes, indeed. Say it what it is. It's a barrier.
Thank you.
Okay, you're welcome.
I just wanted to thank everyone for the amazing coordination. I mean, running this many programs over the summer and having them all perform as well as they have is really a testament to the work that you've done. So thank you, and thank you to the staff that, it's, I'm very proud of this work.
I am too, and I'm just really proud of this team. They're the ones that did the daily work and rolled up their sleeves. And, you know, I'd come in and everything was like, everything's great. It's all good. I'm like, sure? Great, you know? But again, a real, a real demonstration of their leadership ability and organization and initiative. And, and of course, most importantly, their love for kids and success. And that really showed when, when we, you know, throughout the work. And when we were planning and the, you know, just again, to come back and to present when we have a couple of team members that have moved on to, you know, those promoted positions. It just speaks a lot to their, their love for the Heights and for the program and how proud they are. So thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And thank you all. Appreciate it. I'm gonna. Actually, I'm gonna put the GEAR Up 2024 proclamation, well, it's already on the agenda, so I don't need to table it because I have it. I didn't think I had it, but I have it.
Okay.
I had it. I was holding on to it.
I'm gonna read our proclamation. It's already been signed by the board, but just wanted to read it in recognition of GEAR Up Week. So GEAR Up Week 2024 proclamation. Whereas the gaining early awareness and readiness for undergraduate programs is a federally-funded competitive grant program designed to increase the number of low-income students who are prepared to enter and succeed in post-secondary education. Whereas GEAR Up serves low-income minority and disadvantaged students and their families from underserved communities who might be the first person in their family to go to college. And whereas GEAR Up provides six- or seven-year grants to states or partnerships to deliver support and resources to students and their families, starting no later than the seventh grade through high school and onward to fulfill their dreams of attaining a post-secondary education. And whereas GEAR Up includes interventions such as tutoring, mentoring, rigorous academic preparation, financial education, and college scholarships to improve access to higher education for low-income minority and disadvantaged first-generation students and their families. And whereas GEAR Up is built around public-private partnerships, enlisting the formidable resources of government, business, and community groups to support low-income students as they prepare to enter and succeed in college. And whereas GEAR Up to New Heights 2028 is a partnership grant between the CHUH City School District, College now of Greater Cleveland, and local colleges and universities. And whereas GEAR Up to New Heights serves eight hundred students in the ninth and tenth grades. And whereas the week of September twenty-third through twenty-seventh, twenty-twenty-four has been declared National GEAR Up Week. And whereas the CHUH Board of Education is committed to providing a quality education for all students, helping them to achieve their highest potential. Now, therefore, we, this, I guess you should read this. Sorry. We, the CHUH Board of Education, do hereby proclaim the week of September twenty-third through twenty-seventh, twenty-twenty-four as National GEAR Up Week in the CHUH City School District and urge all students, families, and citizens to join us in this special observance. Signed, this twenty-fourth day of September, two thousand and twenty-four, CHUH Board of Education members.
So if you guys are good with that, we can vote to accept the proclamation. I apologize, it's late. It was last week, but I think we still want to acknowledge GEAR Up.
You're here.
Yes.
Yes.
Do I have a motion to approve the, or to recognize the GEAR Up Week 2024 proclamation?
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Mr. Gaynor, will you call the roll?
Mr. Heitz?
Yes.
Ms. Lewis?
Yes.
Ms. Serini?
Yes.
Mr. Trimble?
Yes.
All right. Last piece is the superintendent's report. Many of the items were presented by the cadre, so I'm just going to highlight a couple. In terms of goals one and two, I think the big news is that we have implemented now a cell phone policy in all of our schools, the elementary school, the middle school, and the high school. And again, this is aimed to minimize distractions and provide a better academic environment for students. This is aligned to Governor DeWine's expectation for school districts to have a policy in place by the end of the school year. So at the high school, the students are using pencil cases and those are getting, I mean, at the elementary and middle school, those are getting collected. And at the high school, the students are keeping their cell phones out, I'm sorry, away. They're not visible in classes in the hallways. They do have the ability, as of now, we'll see how it goes, to use the cell phones during lunch, in the lunchroom only. So the students are pleased that they still have that piece, but every place else, cell phone-free. All right. In terms of our work supporting exceptional learners, on September twenty-third, Reaching Heights, the Exceptional Children's Advocacy Group and the Board of Developmental Disabilities held a Building Strong Foundation, supporting exceptional learners at the Heights Family Resource Center. Here, families learned about supports and services for students with an IEP or 504 plan and programming designed for exceptional learners. So at the Family Resource Center, we're doing a series of workshops. So it's almost the big Heights Fair. Family Fair is going to be a series of workshops held at the Family Resource Center. So this was the first one. This resource center is open on Tuesdays from four to seven and is staffed there to serve students. We had a wonderful Hall of Fame induction program on September twenty-sixth and welcomed ten alumni into the Hall of Fame. That very next day, they visited classrooms and were able to talk about their lives and experiences with our students in the classrooms. And as it relates to Staff Appreciation Days, during the month of September, we had World Physical Therapy Day, National IT Professional Day, and HR Professionals Day. So we want to thank all of our staff in those roles for the work that they do every day to support our district and students. As it relates to renaming Monticello, we will have our first community discussion on Tuesday, October twenty-ninth. On Monday, October twenty-eighth, we invite staff in for a community discussion. We've held two meetings with Revolutionary Ed, who's supporting us in this process. And we will be sending out communication this week with information to staff and families and community members about those upcoming meetings. Following those meetings, we will have survey and focus groups. We'll gather and analyze that, that information and be prepared to share information with the board likely in January of two thousand and twenty-five. So more to come on that. That will be, a letter will be going out this week. That concludes my report. It is shorter because a lot of things were already covered. So any questions?
One thing I just want to say about the, the cell phone policy. I'm really pleased to see the flexibility that the buildings are showing in the implementation of this policy, that a policy was not written and then hard-lined, implemented with no flexibility. An example of which, at the middle schools, it sounds like the vendor didn't send the yonder bags in time for the first day of school. They adopted a different policy, sort of as a stopgap, realized that it was working well. And it sounds like there was votes, staff votes at both buildings to keep doing it the way they were doing it. And, you know, that, right there, I think is a, is a good example of, you know, flexibility at that level. And then, you know, having cell phones at lunchtime, seeing how that goes. Like you said, we're going to feel it out. So I, I do really appreciate that, that we're, you know, being measured, but also being flexible.
I think it's, you know, I mean, having gone through this myself, you know, five days a week in my day job, where we have initiated a real similar approach this year, it's a game changer. And I know that our administrators, you know, they say that, that really it would be a full-time gig for an administrator to just manage the social media lunacy that happens during the school day. And so having that, that sort of taken away liberates them to actually do work of education and around education. And so I hope that we will find the same thing in the Heights, and I expect that we will.
When will we have the first, for the middle school level, the first PBIS reports on Q1?
The TFI comes out, there's a fall is like the baseline, and then the spring is when you see the growth. So, I mean, the fall, we might be able to compare last fall to this fall. But we'll also have in the spring, the fall-to-spring comparison.
Yeah. Yeah, I'd love to see the year-over-year, the fall-to-fall, just to see, starting off no cell phones versus starting off cell phones. I think it'd be really interesting.
And as Dan alluded to, many, many districts are doing this. We're not unique. In fact, we're following what, you know, Governor DeWine has.
We have no choice.
Asked everyone to do, which is create cell phone policies. But from what we heard on the Safe Schools Committee that we were on Monday, it sounds like the climate is much calmer than it's been in a long time, based on the, and no cell phones is a large contributor to that calming effect. I'd like to remind the board members, please sign the GEAR Up proclamation before you leave. Do not leave tonight without doing that. Liz, did you have any further comments?
That's it.
Then I will turn it over to our treasurer for the treasurer's report, Mr. Gaynor.
Hey, good evening, everyone. So we have our three things for the month of October as part of the treasurer's report. Again, this is aligned with Strategic Plan Goal Five, Objective Three. So the first financial thing we want to talk about tonight is the T2 report. So you'll recall last week, we talked, or last week, last month, we talked about the T1 report, which is how we report number of riders to ODE. And we talked about how there are more non-public riders than public riders for the district. So the T2 report is used to certify also then to ODE of those, those riders, how much that costs. So we provide a T2 report to the state every year. It includes transportation expenses for pupils that are transported on a regular basis. So it doesn't include things like, you know, field trips and athletics and summer school and those kinds of things. So if you hear discussion about a T2 report, that's the second of the transportation reports that gets reported to ODE. So the second, and this was, this was to your question, Molly, the early childhood education grant. So Danielle did submit, along with Laura Bates, the application for that grant. So this is a pilot that gives us some funds for full-day programming for preschool, for regular ed preschool. And so the district was awarded a hundred and six thousand, two hundred and fifty dollars for the twenty-four, twenty-five school year. Again, that's a pilot. And that amount of money will be used to offset staff salaries and benefits to reduce the cost of the program, which then translates to savings for families as well.
Right, right. Because that program requires families to pay for the preschool. And as we know, money is frequently a barrier.
Right. Yeah, so congratulations to Danielle and DeLora and everyone who was involved with that because that was, again, something that they was, was competitive and that they did apply for. And I think that because of the history of the early childhood program and how well it's rated.
It has a great, great reputation.
Great reputation, and that helped.
Great reputation. That's fantastic.
For sure. And the last item we have for tonight is Senate Bill twenty-nine, so.
Oh, this is records.
Yes, putting that on everyone's radar. And I saw Sean smile because he was talking about it, which is what prompted me to put it in Three Things at Cabinet. He brought this up. So effective, that was effective October twenty-fourth of two thousand and twenty-four. So again, although, because the school year already started, this will be something more that will affect the district next year. But as you see, it governs the collection, use, and protection of educational records by technology providers, which is defined as a person who contracts with the school district to provide school-issued device for student use and/or creates or receives and maintains educational records. So there's, the technology provider must have a contract. So, there's, the technology provider must have a contract, which ensures appropriate safeguards for educational records. And no later than August 1st of each school year, the district must provide direct and timely notice of any curriculum testing or assessment technology provider contracted affects a student's educational record. So, that's something that the school district will have to address for the beginning of.
So, this would be Infinite Campus and all of our curriculum platforms and, and, and?
And, 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 yes.
Everything.
Yeah.
Okay.
There will be a ton. It'll, it'll work out fine, but there's a ton of, of that sort of thing that we do.
Yeah. Even with my own 7th grader, I'm like thinking of all the things that she signs into and all that stuff, and I'm like, "Oh, my gosh."
Every textbook that has an online version.
Yep, yeah. Machi, machi.
So, something else that, you know, again, one of those, I guess, kind of unfunded mandates where we're gonna be, you know, dealing with this, this requirement, but.
So, it's safe to assume that the cost of our license agreements with all the textbooks and online platforms, blah, 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 is going to go up to reflect this new?
A lot of it is, I think, some of it certainly is things that we, that there's not a fee for. You know, I'm thinking about things like, you know, ed puzzles and, and college board, you know, AP classroom, that sort of thing, that the fees are already built in, if you will. So, not everything will cost, it's just gonna be a new part of the, sort of the boilerplate licensing agreement.
So, Scott, in so much as you can say, what does that actually look like, that August 1st deadline? Like, what is, what is happening? What are we doing by August 1st?
Yeah, so we are sending this notice out via.
Sean, can you go to the, thank you.
Put it on the website, put it on Infinite Campus.
So, it's, what we have to do is we have to post it on the district website of every program that we're using across all various platforms, educationally wide, across all buildings and district. And so then, and then every, so we have until August this year to upload everything. And then we have to have the, basically send notification out to our families of these are the programs that the district is using.
And just make them sign an end-user license agreement?
I know, right? So, again, one of those pieces of legislation that we monitor along the way, and there we go. All right. Any other questions on any of the three things? Again, here's the website link, so all the three things from the beginning of, the three things.
From the beginning of things.
Beginning of time.
From the beginning of things sits out there.
In the beginning.
This is a new Dr. Seuss book.
And that's it for me. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Gaynor. And now it'll be the board president report, and I have several things to cover. The first thing is per, a follow-up from the presentation we saw at the last work session on September 24th. I received a request from Ryan Porter of Impact. He was the severance developer to tour the high school, and Liz and I are coordinating that. We're also gonna see, he, you know, volunteered to talk to a class, so we're trying to coordinate that as well. Board walkthroughs are taking place at our schools the weeks of October 7th and October 14th, and I'm looking forward to these. I'm pleased to see that we've added some CTE classes as well. And I know several of us are, have signed up for these. So, they're, another thing that I really enjoy doing is getting to be in the schools and seeing what's going on. I'm sorry Suzie Kazer, who was here, had to leave, but I wanted to share some highlights on Reaching Heights Summer Music Camp. I received some information from Suzie. The camp started in 2005, and next year will be its 20th anniversary, which is hard to believe, but it's fantastic. The goal in starting the camp was to give middle school musicians in the Cleveland Heights, University Heights community access to affordable, high-quality music instruction, and discover the power of sustained effort and teamwork and lessons for life. Heights Summer Music Camp continues to have a profound effect on campers, but is also a significant, significant force for the mentors and professional educators who participate. And some of the highlights about the campers, camp enrollment is back to pre-COVID levels. That's very exciting. The camp had 88 campers this year, and it, you know, roughly was between 80 and 90 in the years prior to COVID. It had dropped down to, I think, as low as 63 during the COVID years. Well, there was the one year they didn't even have it. Once kids come to camp, they return. This year was at an all-time high return rate of 80%.
That's great.
So, that's fantastic. The camp strives for equity and participation. This was the first year the camp had equal number of boys and girls, and half of the campers were white and 46% were African-American. Scholarships have always played a critical role in making camp accessible, and this year was no different. Financial support helped 41% of those who attended. And many campers rely on school district-owned instruments. Access to these instruments are critical to making the camp a reality for a third of the campers. And some highlights about the camp staff. Robust staffing allows for a high level of success for the campers. This year's staff consisted of 25 Heights High student members, five college students, two of whom are music education, they're, they're majoring in music education, and 19 music professionals. So, that's a lot of, you know, adults helping students, so the ratio is pretty amazing on this camp. Music Director Dan Heim noted the high levels of support allows him to ask campers to really stretch. And anyone who's gone to the concerts, I think, can agree that they do stretch. It's also important to note that the Heights music program in this camp had a big effect on staff. Nine professionals who worked the camp are alumni of Heights High, and five of them are former campers themselves. Suzie also noted how much the Reaching Heights music camp appreciates the partnership they have with our school district and how that is crucial for the camp's operations and success. And I think she was gonna get up and speak at public comments, but we had already taken the clipboard away. But she sent me a note and said she had to leave, but she wanted to make sure that we were, she publicly thanked us for the partnership we have with the camp. And for the last part of my report, I have a couple of important reminders. Board members, if you have not already done so, please complete the required anti-fraud training from the Auditor of State. This arrived in your email last week on Monday, September 23rd. The, it was from, it said, "Do not delete Public School Works," and the subject was "Training New Enrollment." So, that's what you can go find.
What day was that, Julie?
The 23rd, September 23rd. And you must complete it by the 20, by November 29th.
It's about a 10-minute.
Yeah, it's a video, and then you just answer one question at the end, to not record your participation in it. Our next regular meeting will be on election night, November 5th. And we didn't change it. We usually do change it on election, but we didn't this year because otherwise it would have conflicted with Capitol Conference the following week. So, we decided it was better to just keep our meeting on November 5th. I would like to schedule a retreat this fall or early winter to cover finance topics. So, Scott, if you can please coordinate dates and get, get that scheduled for us. And I want to remind everyone that early voting starts next week on Tuesday, October 8th. I encourage all eligible voters to exercise their right to vote. And board members, one last thing. If you did not see it, we got an email from Mark Bobo at the Ohio School Boards Association inviting people to sign up or apply, not sign up. You apply to serve on an OSBA statewide committee. The deadline to apply is November 17th. So, if you have any questions about that or you didn't see that email, please let me know, and I'll be happy to forward it to you. And that concludes this month's president's report. So, the next thing on our agenda is board committee reports. Do we have any?
You mentioned the incredible Hall of Fame inductions. It was a very successful event. Glad to see it back at Heights High during the day. So, we had a number of Heights High students who were present for the inductions. I know that that means a lot to the inductees. They mentioned it to me later that night, that they were thrilled that they were able to give their speeches in front of Heights High students, because very often I think the speeches are, are aimed to the current students. And I have to give great kudos to the Heights Schools Foundation for putting on a really good event. Laura Lobel, Susan Carver, Chrissy Dietrich Gallagher behind the scenes. Megan McMahon was, as always, fantastically helpful. And it was just, it was a great event. Betsy Friedlander as well. It was, it was awesome. We're really building a great model to do this year after year.
Great.
I attended my first Safe Schools Committee meeting that, I know you mentioned Jody, staffed by Paul, which is fantastic. I'm really impressed by the cross-functional nature of that committee. People from across the district taking a look at, you know, continuous improvement is really what I see that, that group is doing, and there's always room for improvement. And you just keep going, keep iterating, so I'm happy to be a part of that.
Thank you for joining that committee. I appreciate having another board member on it. Any new business?
Yesterday, I attended the League of Women Voters Forum on gerrymandering and how it affects public education. And the man over there who's at the big kids' table, Dan Heinz, did a terrific job holding up his third of that forum. It was very interesting. There were a lot of important points about how issue one affects us very directly, and how important it is that, that we look at that ballot measure with an eye towards improving public education in Ohio. So, it was very well put together, and you can find a recording of it on the League of Women Voters website, which is, okay, I can do this, L W V Greater Cleveland.org.
Or just Google it.
Yeah, you could Google that too. Probably easier.
Is there any unfinished business? Correspondence and announcements?
Oh, thank you to the, the City of University Heights for inviting us to their Fall Fest. I understand that the Tiger came in second place in the recycling bin race.
I missed to put that in my report.
That's pretty great.
Only Mrs. Mishmash, the Bialy's Bagel, could, could beat the Tiger this year.
So, the Tiger beat Cooper the Chicken, huh?
That's what I understand.
This sounds like someone's thrown the gauntlet down.
Well, I wasn't there, but I just understand that the Tiger did well.
Well, congratulations to the Tiger. And is, is there anything else? If not, I will ask for a motion to adjourn.
I motion we adjourn.
Do I have a second? Mr. Gaynor, will you call the roll?
Mr. Heinz.
Yes.
Ms. Lewis.
Yes.
Ms. Serini.
Yes.
Mr. Trimble.
Yes.
Thank you, everyone. We are adjourned. Have a good evening.
Thank you, everyone.